Call to order the Alexander County Board of Commissioners meeting for Monday, December the 5th, 2022. And for the invocation, I'll be doing that. And I recognize Commissioner Josh Lael for our Pledge of Allegiance. If you would please stand with him.
Father, we thank you for this day and for the opportunities that you've given to us. Thank you for the country we live in where we have freedoms, that we can have elections, and we can vote. Lord, I pray for all these that will be sworn in tonight. You should give them clear thoughts and minds, help us to make wise decisions that would move our school board forward, move our county forward, help us to all work together. We just pray your protection upon us as we leave from here and return to our homes. We know all good things come from you. Pray for others that protect us each day, for our EMS, EMTs, Sheriff's Department, police, and fire, Highway Patrol. Lord, help those each day, and Lord be near to us as only you can be. All this we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen. Can you please address the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can be seen. Does any Commissioner have a Commissioner report?
I have it.
All right. Moving on along, entertain the motion to adopt the agenda. Everyone's had their booklets in time to look at it.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the agenda as is.
Second. Okay, you have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If there is none, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. Next item of business is a pretty good thing. We're going to have a swearing-in ceremony for the Alexander County Board of Commissioners and the Board of Education. And typically, we'll let the Board of Education go first, and our Honorable Judge Dale Graham will be doing that for us. If you'll step up, sir.
All right. Thank you. All right. Well, it's always a great privilege and an honor to participate in these swearing-in ceremonies. I particularly enjoy these because here we see public servants, true public servants, who are motivated by wanting to do good and help their communities. They're not here because they have some personal ambition or anything of that nature. They're certainly not here for the money. They're here because they want to help our communities do better. And that could not be said any more so than with our Board of Education. So I would like to call them up. We've got, I believe, five new members this time, four new members, right?
Yeah.
And since they're all brand-new, I'd like to do each one of them one at a time. So we'll go in alphabetical order. Rob Arguelas and his family, if you would come up here. And Rob is actually my neighbor. Do you want to stand right over here where they live in our neighborhood? So it's a real pleasure. Okay. These are your children and your fiancee, I believe. Okay, so if you'll left-hand the Bible, raise your right and repeat after me. We want everybody seen, that's for sure. That's right. I, Rob Arguelas.
I, Rob Arguelas.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
So help me, God.
So help me, God.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will be faithful.
That I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
The state of North Carolina.
And the constitutional powers and authorities.
And the constitutional powers and authorities.
Which are or may be established.
Which are or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
And that I will endeavor to support.
And I will endeavor to support.
Maintain and defend.
Maintain and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
So help me, God.
So help me, God.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will truly execute.
That I will truly execute.
The duties of the Board of Education.
The duties of the Board of Education.
Of Alexander County.
Of Alexander County.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
And according to law.
And according to law.
So help me, God.
So help me, God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, I think our next one is Joshua Dagenhart. Joshua, if you want to come up with your family. All right, got the Bible holder, holders? Okay. All right. Left-hand the Bible, raise your right and repeat after me. I, Joshua Dagenhart.
I, Joshua Dagenhart.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
So help me, God.
So help me, God.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will be faithful.
I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And the constitutional powers and authorities.
And the constitutional powers and authorities.
Which are.
Which are.
Or may be established.
Or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
And that I will endeavor to support.
I will endeavor to support.
Maintain and defend.
Maintain and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
So help me, God.
So help me, God.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will truly execute.
I will truly execute.
The duties of the Board of Education.
The duties of the Board of Education.
Of Alexander County.
Of Alexander County.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
To the best of my skill and ability.
And according to law.
And according to law.
So help me, God.
So help me, God.
Congratulations. Okay, I think next on our list is Anthony McLean. Okay, Anthony, if you and your family will come up here. Certainly, I know Anthony, he's often at the courthouse in a good way. He's law enforcement, so that's good. All right. Left-hand the Bible, raise your right, repeat after me. I, Anthony McLean.
I, Anthony McLean.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
So help me, God.
So help me, God.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will be faithful.
That I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And the constitutional powers and authorities.
And the constitutional powers and authorities.
Which are.
Which are.
Or may be established.
Or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
And that I will endeavor to support.
And that I will endeavor to support.
Maintain and defend.
Maintain and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
So help me, God.
So help me, God.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will truly execute.
That I will truly execute.
The duties of the Board of Education.
The duties of the Board of Education.
Of Alexander County.
Of Alexander County.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
And according to law.
And according to law.
So help me, God.
So help me, God.
Congratulations. Okay, and last but certainly not least, Matthew Reese and his family, if you'll come up.
You know this guy? You know this guy?
Yeah, I got a little smacked in the head.
Okay, everybody can be seen, all right? All right, if you'll repeat after me. I, Matthew L. Reese.
I, Matthew L. Reese.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
So help me, God.
So help me, God.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will be faithful.
That I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And the constitutional powers and authorities.
And the constitutional powers and authorities.
Which are.
Which are.
Or may be established.
Or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
And that I will endeavor to support.
And that I will endeavor to support.
Maintain and defend.
Maintain and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
So help me, God.
So help me, God.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will truly execute.
That I will truly execute.
The duties of the Board of Education.
The duties of the Board of Education.
Of Alexander County.
Of Alexander County.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
And according to law.
And according to law.
So help me, God.
So help me, God.
Congratulations. Okay, I think our next order of business is our county commissioners, and I believe they want to do our, yeah, they want to do it as a group, so if you all come down here and we'll just have your families come up here, anyone who wants to hold the Bible, and space it out a little bit. They told me they got so much on the agenda, they want to be quick about it, so we're going to do our best.
I feel like the odd man out.
No, I'm good.
Okay, and so I'll say, I state your name. Okay, so I'll say, I state your name, and you can just state your names in unison, okay? We'll just do that one time, okay? Thank you. Got it? All right. I state your name.
I, Reese. Where are you?
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
So help me, God.
So help me, God.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will be faithful.
That I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers.
And to the constitutional powers.
And authorities.
And authorities.
Which are or may be established.
Which are or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
And that I will endeavor to support.
And that I will endeavor to support.
Maintain and defend.
Maintain and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
So help me, God.
So help me, God.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will well and truly.
That I will well and truly.
Execute the duties.
Execute the duties.
Of the office of County Commissioner.
Of the office of County Commissioner.
For Alexander County.
For Alexander County.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
And according to law.
And according to law.
So help me, God.
So help me, God.
Congratulations.
Well, I could have that. I could have, yes, sir.
No, it's okay. Everybody can, you have a chance to leave if you need to. Thanks for everybody coming out.
Thanks. Have a good night.
He's had a busy day. He's had a busy day.
Oh, yeah.
Moving on to item number two. I recognize Madam Clerk. Anyone for public comment?
We have anybody today.
Okay, no one signed up. Okay, moving on to item number three, public hearing, rezoning petition, RZ 20-01, or 22-01, excuse me. Bethlehem Baptist Church, recognize Brian Burgess, Director of Planning and Development. And we need to open a public hearing.
Let me ask you this as a company. Make a motion.
Make a motion, will you open the public hearing?
Motion in a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Jim. Thank you, sir. Go ahead.
Thank you, Commissioners. As Chairman Reese said, I'm your new Director of Planning and Development. It's good to meet you if I haven't already. If there's anything you need, feel free to stop by the office, be glad to help you out. This case file is fairly straightforward rezoning. It's over on 127 headed north. There's a vacant parcel. The church who owns that is looking to rezone from what's currently residential agricultural 20 to highway commercial. The Planning Commission voted last month to send forward a favorable recommendation as well as staff. Future land use plan, I think we have a map for that, but Chad's trying to help me out with this here. So that's the current zoning right now. And that future land use map, it's kind of hard to see, but that's the best one we've got right now. It does recommend that that turns to commercial as part of a commercial corridor on 127. I think it's not too far from the edge, but it is still within that recommendation as according to our 2008 comprehensive land use plan. Staff sees no problem with this. The Planning Commission also sent forth favorable recommendation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Did you have any letters of objection at all?
I haven't.
No phone calls?
I've had a couple of phone calls, but mostly just asking questions, what's going here?
Okay. Is there any plans for something commercial on that property?
To the best of my knowledge, no. I think the, and the applicants here tonight, if you guys have questions for them as well, but, or at least the agent on behalf of the church. But what's been explained to me is that the property may be marketed in order for them just to be able to sell off and make some money.
Okay. All right. Any other question?
Mr. Chairman, I would just ask, because I don't know the answer to this. I am a member of Bethlehem Baptist Church. Is there any reason I would need to recuse myself from this vote?
Mr. Chairman, an old statement I'd make to that, if you don't mind me saying something, sir, is the fact that this is not going to, in any way, shape, or form, going to put any money in his pocket, even though he's a Realtor. So therefore, without it putting any revenue in his pocket, then there is no reason whatsoever, based on state statute and based on the information that I have, that he should excuse himself from this vote, sir.
Yeah, I see no reason. You can vote. Okay. Like rest of us, so.
If so, we're meaning.
Okay, we need to close the public hearing.
So move.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Make a motion, we approve the rezoning.
Have a second.
Mr. Chairman, I have a second.
Okay. Have a motion in a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Burgess? Just stay still, sir.
Okay.
We have another one. Public hearing, text amendment petition, TA 22-03, Friendship Lutheran Church. Recognize Mr. Brian Burgess, our planning director, once again.
Thank you.
And we need to open the public hearing again.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we open the public hearing.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Proceed, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner. So this is, like you said, a petition from Friendship Lutheran Church. We discussed a sign that they're interested in putting in. You guys are probably familiar with the type of signs a lot of churches are moving to, no longer using the manual message board, but the electronic message board. The zoning district that they're in is residential, which would not have allowed for that. They had two options, which was to rezone the property or to ask for a text amendment. After discussing this with them, they said that they thought it would probably make more sense to rezone the property on the basis that as soon as they get one, a church down the street will also come and say that we'd like one as well, then they have to rezone. And you and I would see each other every month just rezoning church properties in the county for the next couple of years. So the text amendment that was suggested by the church and moderately amended by me was to, there's already a part in our ordinance that exempts nonprofit charitable and government insignias. They wanted to broaden that language just to include signs. The part that I added on is that those signs still have to meet all of our other standards in order to be considered allowable. So for example, specifically electronic signs, they can't be flashing, they can't be over a certain brightness, text has to stay within eight seconds, that kind of stuff. Size limitations would also, you know, they're not going to put a giant digital billboard out there.
So height and size.
Exactly. Yes, sir. So the way that this is worded would allow me to make sure that there's still meaning standards, but at the same time allow churches to sort of be those exceptions that we were used to seeing anyway. A lot of those have already been grandfathered in, so.
All right. All right, thank you. Need to close the public hearing. Does anyone in the audience want to speak?
Mr. Chairman, one thing I would say as part of the public comment, I have had parties from another church, not Friendship Lutheran, but another church in the county, that have a piece of property that is residential, that they are looking to put a sign on. And I think they have been in contact with you guys, same scenario, except, you know, I don't know if theirs is going to be digital or not, but regardless, same scenario. And so, like I said, I think this is not a one-time, you know, one-time deal.
Okay. Glad you're on top of it, too. That's good. Make a motion that we close the public hearing to have a second.
Second.
Okay, motion in a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, would entertain a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the ordinance as presented tonight.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any other discussion or questions? If not, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Just remain there once again. Number five item is public hearing, text amendment petition, TA 22-04, various amendments. Recognize Mr. Burgess once again. And we need to open a public hearing again.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we open the public hearing pertaining to text amendment petition 22-04.
All right.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Jim. Proceed, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is a staff-presented package of amendments, things that I've found just in the process of helping out residents that probably could use some tweaking. So I will give you the Cliff Notes version of this, but by all means, stop me if there's something you want to go into more detail on. The first item would be to give the county, and by default with our agreement with the town, the town the authority to pick up "we buy houses" signs, those kinds of things that are in the right of way, and just throw them away. As it stands, they technically have a property right to those signs unless we put something in our ordinance explicitly saying, "No, you don't." So now, if they're in the right of way, obviously if they're on private property, that's none of our business, but if they're in the right of way cluttering up, I can pick those up and put them in a dumpster, the end. So that's what that item would handle for us. The location of accessory buildings, I've had a few folks come in, I think my first week here, I dealt with three of these people alone, who wanted to put a carport on their driveway, but it was in the front of their yard. And the way their ordinance currently reads, that's not allowable because it's an accessory structure. But carports are pretty commonly going to go over a driveway, so this amendment would basically say, as long as the carport is attached to a driveway, we can allow it. This would not include folks who want to put one out in the middle of the yard or anything like that, because I've seen those, that looks bad. But if it's actually attached to a driveway and it's serving the purpose it's built for, this would allow that.
Okay.
There's a typo in our area yard and height requirements table.
Amen.
So what it says currently is that the minimum lot area is 12,000 square foot, but the minimum square footage per dwelling unit is 20,000, which means that I could technically allow somebody to subdivide an unbuiltable lot. They could cut themselves out of a piece of property, basically. This would allow that to go into conformity so that it's 20,000 and 20,000 on both sides of the table. Minimum dimensions of spaces, this is actually because of a rezoning that's taking place tomorrow night with town council. Looking at the tractor supply parking lot situation, I noticed that we don't actually specify what travel ways are supposed to be in parking lots, and I think that's how that happened, where you're trying to go from one side to the other and you just kind of pray that you make it to the other side. This is something that would basically say that if you're going to have a two-way travel way, it's got to be at least 24-foot, and if it's going to be one-way, it's 18. It just gives us a little bit more objective standards to send to developers as they're building those kind of parking lots. Sections 154, 223, and 224, this is a lot. The Cliff Notes version of it is, it takes what's already there, consolidates it into something that I think is a little more clear. All of the things that are listed under general plan requirements may not apply to every project, but at least lets folks who are interested in building in our community know exactly what I'm expecting to see when we get a plan review, so that there's no miscommunication. I've had a couple of people already who have had to print and reprint and reprint plans, and they're not sure what's expected of them, and I'm not sure what I'm looking at, so this hopefully clarifies that discussion. The second last thing is the penalty section, which just clarifies what the process is for handling zoning violations in the town and the county. This one came from the Saunders Lane Junkyard case that we're dealing with right now, who have been in violation on and on for, I think, a better part of a year now. We've spoken with our county attorney, and he's encouraged us to be a little bit more clear about what the expectations would be. And then the last thing would be the plan development ordinance that is a massive eight-page document that I will not put you guys to sleep with now, but the short of it is, it creates a conditional use zoning district that allows folks who are developing a specific type of project to come before you and make a petition to have their project approved on a case-by-case basis.
Okay. Well, this stuff sounds good to me, though, so we've been needing some of that for a while. Anyone in the audience have a question?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question, just because I'm one of those people that have called over the years, and I think you guys can attest that I've said our zoning needs tweaking significantly just due to some clerical errors and also its archaic nature in some ways. Pertaining to section 154-079, the discrepancy, and I have seen that, you know, I'd seen that and I have seen that in the zoning ordinance. The, under R 20, you know, minimum size requirement was saying 12,000 square feet, but then it said, you know, but the minimum square footage per dwelling unit should be 20,000. If I, and I don't have the zoning ordinance in front of me, so please correct me if I'm wrong, but if I remember correctly, that was listed with, on that table or chart, with a piece of property that has public water and also public sewer.
I think that's correct, yeah.
Okay. My con... I'll be honest, I have a concern with the 20,000 square feet, because there are existing neighborhoods now that do not meet the 20,000 square feet that have water and sewer, one example being Wittenburg Springs in Bethlehem.
Yep.
Because I've built lots of houses in there. And there are lots in Wittenburg Springs currently that would not meet the 20,000 square foot requirement. And one thing that we've talked about, about, you know, pertaining to zoning is we, you know, we have actually talked about potentially, you know, looking into and potentially allowing higher density development due to development costs and other factors. So, do we want that changed to 20,000 square feet, or was it intended to be 12,000 square feet?
Typically, what's in Wittenburg Springs? You mentioned Wittenburg Springs.
I mean, Wittenburg Springs, which is not fully developed, but there are hundreds of houses. I mean, it does have public water and public sewer that, you know, the developer paid for when it was developed. I mean, I have no connection to that, to the developer or the development, other than I built it, we lived in there for about four years, and then I built houses in there as part of my real job. But, you know, there are plenty of lots in there that are 13,000, 14,000, you know, square feet, which, I mean, 20,000 square feet, you're talking, you know, 43,560 square feet is an acre. So, we're basically saying, hey, you have to have a minimum of half, you know, essentially a half an acre. Which, to me, when you have water and sewer, seems excessive. You know, I mean, we have residential, single-family zoning that allows lots to be as small as 6,500 square feet. An example of that being Alexander Heritage Subdivision in Bethlehem, because I've built a bunch of houses in there, too. Because most of those lots are actually 65-feet wide by 100-feet deep. Is, you know, that's the standard lot size in that little development. But it's a, and I'm not saying that that's definitely not what everybody wants, or...
Is that something that we could put in, like, if there is water and sewer, and it is a subdivision?
Yes, sir. There's actually already a broken-out area of the table. I went with the conservative option, assuming it was supposed to be 20,000, but by all means, the board has the power to say, "No, we'd like this to be 12."
And my thing is, what was the intent? I mean, I'm thinking the intent would have been 12, or why would they ever put that number in there?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a suggestion that we look a little deeper into the lot size. If a lot does have a public sewer, public water, which makes all the difference in the world as far as septic and repair areas and all of that good stuff, but to be competitive with our surrounding counties that are doing subdivisions, that have the infrastructure in place, our lot sizes will have to be smaller to be in line with what they already allow. That's just my suggestion.
Well, and my, I mean, my opinion comes from, you know, I have looked at developing property, and to be honest, have never developed any property because the cost to develop property into building lots currently is astronomical. And when I say astronomical, when you get to looking at water, you know, water infrastructure, sewer infrastructure, you know, everything has to be DOT spec, approvable streets. The last price I got, or the last time I checked, on the cost to build a DOT spec road was well over $300 a linear foot. Put that in perspective, 1,000-foot road, basically a football field, $300,000. You know, and when you add all those things up, honestly, I think that's why there's no more development, you know, currently than there is, is because it's so expensive. And so, and that's one reason so many neighborhoods are around, I mean, all through North Carolina, as well as everywhere else, you know, people are building on postage stamp lots. I'm not saying that's what everybody wants. That's not what I want either. But I'm just, you know, but the ability to do that is really the only thing that's going to allow us to have any type of affordable housing, even though very little housing is affordable right now.
One thing to keep in mind is, on our existing lots and subdivisions currently, whether it be Wittenburg Springs, Cornerstone, Green Meadows, wherever, you have several lots that are measuring out at 17,500. Well, if we go further with this, then we've got dead lots and subdivisions because even though at the time it was developed, it was permissible to build on those lots, it will currently be, you go with the more strenuous restriction, which will be this year. So, I think we need to, in my opinion, take a step back and think that through a little bit better.
Well, it sounds like everybody's in favor of reducing. I'm kind of personally like being out in the wide-open spaces myself, but, you know, if somebody wants to live close together, that's fine and dandy within. So, it sounds like we need to tweak that to the, can you take that back to 12,000?
Absolutely, yeah.
And we approve it with that correction?
Yes, sir.
Is there anything else that we went through that you have any questions about?
I'm just really glad that you've gotten on, that you've dealt...
I love the initiative.
I do, too. I do, too, because I...
Keep on truckin'.
You know, I mean, personally, I can say, I talked to Jamie about an issue, and she told me on the phone, she said, "I think he's already working on that." And I was like, "Cool." Because we've been looking at working on this stuff for...
We can keep you busy.
Yeah, as I say, I'll keep bringing them to you until you get frustrated with me.
Years, and, yeah, I was gonna say, about eight years that I'm working on.
I'll take the opportunity to plug that we, I am working on essentially an entire ordinance rewrite, but that takes a very long time, and a comprehensive plan needs to be done before that's really completed because they should speak to each other. I think some of you, Jamie will be asking to be on the steering committee as well as some of the other members of the community, so a good couple of years' worth of work ahead of us, so...
Okay. Before we close the public hearing, anybody in the audience have a question? Any other commissioners? Go ahead, say.
I would just like to know what the future holds for, like, in that area of where Bethlehem Baptist Church and Alden 127, I know that y'all have discussed it many times before in other meetings, but I mean, I'm just here, just wondering what the future holds for that area.
If you don't, could you come to the mic and say, for everybody in the radio world and TVs?
Well, not, I grew up on 127, and my mother currently lives there. And I just would like to know what the plans are currently now for 127 down that area, across from Bethlehem Baptist Church. I know that they're wanting to widen the road. Now, we're having a lot that's going to go commercial. I'd like to know if that's going to just go on down further, or if it's going to stop there. I mean, people have homes and have families, and they want to raise their children. And, I mean, we don't want to buy land and build houses on stuff that we know that somebody's going to put a commercial building or business next to it. I mean, I just, I would like to just know from you guys what you think. I mean, what are y'all's plans? What's your name?
Your name, if you don't mind.
Myra.
Okay. Typically, the process, if someone, it's RA 20, I think, most of that property. I know the realtors are a little more familiar than me. But there's a time, just like you have to advertise if you want to change it, you know, for planning. But once the four-lane comes on 127, you know, that's going to, you know, make it more, I guess, attractive for some businesses. But, you know, there again, we're not wanting to drive out residents, but we need some retail and some commercial mixed in, you know, with it. Understand your concern, but like I say, before anything happens, there's always a published time for it. The Planning and Zoning Board gets together, and they're a group of people from kind of every, you know, maybe some realtors, some business people, some community residents, you know, that are on that. So, you know, we're not going to make it, you know, Winston-Salem or Charlotte
Hope not.
right over it. But there again, the DOT controls, you know, the roads and all that stuff, and we really have no control over that. But the things we can control, we always, you know, look at and try to think of the best way.
Well, I mean, I just wonder, I mean, if it was in your situation and in your homes, how you would feel if somebody started developing or making something commercial? I mean, I just don't know, with my mother, with her home and stuff, I don't know how much we want to, you know, put sink into the property if something would come to where it's just commercial all the way down, you know?
Mr. Chairman, correct me if I'm wrong, but the widening of 127, and I say this because, you know, I live in Bethlehem, and I actually I miss Myra very well. The widening project initially ended at Ritchie Road, which is the road, you know, basically the four-lane was slated to end at Ritchie Road. And currently...
Which is the property where you rezoned for commercial, so there you go. It goes right there.
Well, it's, as I say, it's going to go back down to two lanes. I mean, it would go from four lanes to two lanes, right there. And I mean, I know where you guys live, you know, and I... Currently, the, you know, DOT has, I mean, well, if it had gone the way it was supposed to, or they, excuse me, the way they said that it was going to go, it would already be in by now.
Yeah.
Exactly.
But it's been pushed back and pushed back and pushed back, and now they're saying that it, you know, now they're saying 2025, and actually, I think they're even talking about maybe changing how far it goes, you know, because we, like I say, we don't have, I mean, basically, our meetings with DOT, the only things that we get to really talk to them about is making sure that our emergency services have good access, you know, because that's one thing that we've had to look at, is making sure EMS can get on, you know, can get out and go both ways quickly and easily. And, you know, in the school, making sure the schools have good access. But other than that, it's basically what DOT tells us they're going to do.
Exactly.
And so...
Well, I've even worked...
Yeah, and I don't think, I mean, I don't think anybody, I don't think we, I don't think anybody sees commercial going way on down 127, considering how much, you know, the closer to the lake or the bridge that you are, the better it is for commercial business because of the traffic count, and that's what everybody looks at.
Exactly.
And honestly, the traffic count, when you get up to Ticktown Road, and then, you know, and actually, a lot of traffic turns off Ticktown, and that, well, I mean, if you look at the numbers, as soon as you pass the Rankdam Road intersection, the traffic numbers drop to nothing. And then, once you get on to Ticktown, it's, I mean, it's very, you know, there's way more traffic on Rankdam Road than there is on 127 at, you know, at Ritchie Road.
Well, it's just like Ritchie Road, I mean, people travel from Granite Falls and Dudley and all that way. I mean, it's just phenomenal. That's how everybody gets through or quickly or whatever. But if 127 is congestive and full of traffic, like from five to six, which we're now experiencing with all the new apartments and all that stuff, then it's like we have no other way to go except Granite Falls or to 16, I suppose, is the way you would have to go to get into Hickory or whatnot. So, I'm just, in future, just trying to figure out what y'all's mindset is as far as that goes.
There's a comprehensive plan. Have you seen that plan?
Not completely. I've seen years ago, but not recently.
That comprehensive plan shows down Highway 127 what the future layout and plan for the county is for development of that area. And I think that that, I'm going to refer to you here, goes all the way down to Bethlehem Baptist.
Yes.
The corridor, they call it, yeah.
And you'll see it if you, we could maybe get a map sent out to you, but it'll be some type of highlighted or hash-marked out area down 127, and it's part of what we call a comprehensive plan in the county that was developed.
But I don't think there's anything, I don't think there's anything north of Ticktown Road that is even thought to be commercial in the way distant future.
Well, you're like with the Exxon and Bojangles and all that going, you know, I just didn't know if there was anything else that was planned to come down that as that far, because like I say, you've got all the traffic going from four lanes to two lanes. My mom's 81-years-old, I shouldn't say that, but, you know, it's hard enough to go out to get the mail without being blown off the road because of the traffic. And I'm just concerned of what, you know, if that's the case, then why would I invest in, you know, doing renovations or home improvements or anything like that if it's going to come down and it's going to be, you know, a house, a business, a house, a business, where it used to be a field, a house, a field, a house, a field, a house, that type of thing?
We have a tag meeting in about another week that's through the Council of Governments, and I think it's not next week, but week after, okay? And I will try to get an update on the plans for 127 and what's going on. Now, the plans was to four-lane it all the way down to Bethlehem Baptist Church. And if you pay real close attention to what's going on, if they don't do something about the gasoline tax or some of that, it could push that construction on that, okay? But I will be glad to get the maps and the information at the next meeting, and I will get your copy and the information and send it to you. And the other thing you can do, if you'd like, if you contact Jamie, she could get you a copy of that comprehensive plan so that you'd have it, so you'd know what was going on, where was what. And, but, I mean, I really don't see it developing all the way down to the church. I see it maybe going down to Brown's Auto right there, in that area, you know? And that, then, you know, based on what I've seen before, I think that was the area that they were most concerned about developing and going back toward Hickory and the four-lane. And if you look at the road construction, the way it's set up, there'll be turnaround lanes and everything, so you can get back and do the things you need to do and everything. It won't be just a solid four-lane road. There'll be access that you can turn around and go back north, or turn around and go south. But I will be glad to get that information for you and get it to you, if you don't mind.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. It'll probably be a week. I know, it's within the next 10 days. I don't have the date with me, okay? But, and I'll get that information for you and get it to you.
How far are you from Bethlehem Baptist Church?
Right across from it.
Right across?
Well, my mother is. I don't. I'm trying to get further and further out of the county.
Yeah.
Close to the fire department.
Huh?
Close to the fire department.
She lives right next door to the fire department.
Yeah. She's on the north side of the fire department.
So, in other words, it's kind of like, you know, we had a field in the Ozenhowers, a field in my mother, and then further down, and different ones have asked me, I don't know why I was the one who, everybody asked me to come tonight just to find out what was going on, but, you know, I was just like, I have seen the things in the newspaper and different things, and I was just like, if you've ever been on 127, where Honey Pick is, and it's four lanes, and it becomes two, it becomes a racetrack, because everybody's trying to get around all that traffic and go through, and there's, you know, been, when you have four lanes and you go down to two, so I was concerned that if that was the case, then it was going to be, you know, like right in front of my mother's house and the neighbors' houses and stuff, it was going to be very...
As far as like the lineage, DOT does that, which sometimes we can, you know, just talk to them is all I can do. But like I said, as far as the commercial lots going, it follows this process. They file a petition. There's a notice put in the paper. There's a sign on the property. And just as we've asked before, we'll ask how many complaints, how many people called. So, you know, if something's there and it's not in the right place, we want to, you know, make sure that we've looked at it and make sure it is right before it starts. But I don't think any of us are going out and trying to recruit, you know, commercial properties to come in. But once they contact us, there's a process they have to follow. You know, nothing's done in the back door, and we try to be as transparent as we can, you know, when we do something.
Right.
I appreciate your concern and questions. Thank you. Anyone else? If not, we need to close the meeting.
Make a motion to close the public hearing, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion, second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Burgess, if you'll come back to the podium. The changing to 12,000 square feet, do you need to go back to the planning board, or is that something that you can do?
Commissioners have the option to make amendments to any legislative decision.
Okay. Okay. I entertain the motion to approve with the amendment change to 12,000 square feet.
Is that a motion?
Yes. He made the motion.
I made the motion. Okay. Have a motion and a second. Any... Any questions or other discussion? Okay, being none, all in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, sir. Moving on to item number six, I'd recognize Jamie Starnes in place of Mr. French, public hearing for road name approval, Middle River Lane, and we also need to open the public hearing again.
Make a motion to open the public hearing, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Any motion in a second, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, this is a public hearing to request the approval of road number 3727 JH, which is Middle River Lane, off of Tigtown Road, excuse me, the, the name meets the regulations as required and has been checked for duplication and sound indexing.
Okay. Any commissioner have a question? Anyone in the audience have a word to say about this? Okay, we'll make a motion that we close the hearing.
Second.
Have a second motion, a second, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, and I would entertain the motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve the name change to Middle River Lane.
Second.
Okay, have a motion in a second, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Jamie. Moving on to our next item, number seven, Guardian at Lydham update, and I'd recognize Tanil Hillman, District Administrator for District 22A, NC Judicial Branch.
Hey, thank you for letting me come today. It's been several years since I have been here, I think I came as a supervisor several years ago, but I just wanted to kind of give you guys a little bit of information about our program and give you a brief update on statistics, I know you'll have a lot on the agenda, so I'll keep it very brief, but our office gets appointed on cases when DSS gets involved, and if they file a petition in court for abuse and neglect on a child, then our program is the, appointed to represent the kids in court. So our program is kind of a team approach, so we have very limited staff, and we recruit and train volunteers from the community to serve as guardian at items for our kids in court. So they really do all the hard work, they're the ones that are going out, they visit the kids, they talk to the kids' counselors, social worker, school staff, anybody that's involved with the child, they talk to the parents, and they are the ones that really gather all the information, and they put all that information into a report, and that's a lot of what our training is, is learning how to gather that information and learning how to do those reports, and they, they submit those to the staff, we have, we currently have three staff in our office, and we have approximately, I think we have close to a hundred volunteers right now, but that, that's Iredell and Alexander. So my goal has always been, since I started, I'm from this county, I live in Sugarloaf, so my goal has always been, since I started with the program, to try to recruit volunteers from our county. When I started, we only had a couple volunteers from our county, and I really wanted volunteers from our county representing the kids from our county. So that has really improved a lot, I think, over the last couple of years, we haven't been able to do training as much because of COVID, but we still have a larger present, percentage of our kids covered by Alexander County residents. Now, I think right now, we have eighteen volunteers for Alexander County, and seven of them are from Iredell. So we've been able to utilize some volunteers from Iredell County, and it's a lot easier to recruit people from Iredell County, but the numbers in Iredell had been dropping, so we were using some of those volunteers to cover Alexander County cases, but I think I checked the numbers yesterday, and the only, so I have nine unassigned cases right now. So really, I would like to, to recruit some more volunteers from Alexander, just to be able to get those cases covered, because I'm really passionate about this work, and I, I, I know that when kids have a volunteer assigned, they really have, they really are able to, to give the case more attention and focus on it, because most of our volunteers only carry one to two cases at a time, so that's, that's their goal, and our, and our goal is to have a volunteer to keep the case for as long as that case is open in court. So a lot of times, a child may have a social worker, and they may have a three, four, five, six different social workers in the period of time that they're in care, where our goal is to try to keep the same volunteer on the case. Now, that, I'm not saying that always happens, but I feel like it is, it's a lot, it's a lot better than the, the turnover with social services. But going back to those reports that the volunteers do, they, they complete those reports, they come to staff, we review those, and we file them with the clerk, and that becomes a part of the child's court file. And those reports are what the judge and the, the, all the attorneys use to decide what happens on that, that child's case in court. So, like I said, I'm very passionate about it, I think the work that our volunteers do is phenomenal, like they, they really put their heart and soul into these cases, so I would really love to have some more volunteers from Alexander County, if anybody, and I actually brought some brochures, I think, I think these were scanned to you guys and in your packet, but if, if you want the real thing, I have a few of those, so, and I can answer any questions that you may have.
Ms. Chairman, for some reason, it's my night to talk.
Go ahead.
So, no, I just want to, my wife and I met Ms. Tanil when we took, when we were licensed the second time as foster parents. She taught our map classes with another gentleman, and not long after that, she left Alexander County DSS and, you know, went to work for the Guardian at Lydham folks, I don't know what to say, but anyway, but, just to, and those of you guys know that, that fostering and adoption and such is near and dear to my heart. To kind of break down what a guardian at Lydham is very simply, and please, please add to this, but when a child is taken from a home, and I, and I will say from experience, by the time a child is taken from the home, there is more than enough reason, in my opinion, to have taken that child. They are assigned the guardian at Lydham, who is, who is a non, non-biased person who their only concern is the, is what is best for the child. Because DSS were, you know, DSS, their primary objective is always to reunify the family.
Or to close a case sometimes, sometimes we are really advocating for things not to go as fast, or for things to go faster, if it's, sometimes we're really having to advocate for timelines in court.
And, and I have, and I have been, from experience, a lot of times, the court system takes a long time for things to happen, but basically, the guardian at Lydham is, you know, a lot of times, you have the foster parents who have this opinion, you have DSS who has their opinion, you have the family and or birth, you know, birth parents or whomever, that have their opinion, and you, a lot of times have, you know, you have, you kind of have two sides, and the guardian at Lydham is the person that is only concerned about the child's best interest, not the best interest of the foster parents, not the best interest of, of the birth parents, not the best interest of anybody except the child. And from, from our experience with fostering and adoption of four children over the years, the guardian at Lydham is a very, very important part of, you know, of the process, you know, and the hopes are, is always that a child can go back to their family, but often, that's not the case. And, you know, each of the kids that we've had, you know, all the kids that we've had have had a guardian, you know, GAL. And, you know, we've had children that, that did go back to family. Obviously, we have four children that didn't go back to their, you know, their birth situation. But I just want, but I just wanted to say, if you, you know, if you do have, if you have time that you can devote, it is a very worthwhile venture.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
And Tanil does a good job, too.
I appreciate that, too.
Yeah.
Do you have any questions?
Any other questions? Good information, thank you for what you do for the children in our county.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item of business, item number eight, is Alexander County 2022 Audit Presentation, and I'd recognize Erica Brown from Martin Starnes and Associates.
Good evening. Good evening, I just wanted to start off by, thank you for allowing us to continue as your auditors, we, we value the relationship that we have with the county, and, and we appreciate that opportunity. I'm going to go through some highlights of the audited financial statements. In the beginning, the majority of it is on your general fund specifically, towards the end, I'll talk about some of your enterprise funds, and I'll let you know when I switch over to that. So first off, I wanted to mention that we had an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, which is a clean opinion. It means that we found no material misstatements that led us to believe that the financial statements would be misleading to the reader. And as always, I'd like to thank Jennifer and Linda and her, and their staff in the Finance Department, they're always wonderful to work with, very well prepared, and that helps the audit go smoother for both sides of it, so I wanted to thank them. These next two slides are something we haven't talked about before in a meeting here at the county, I just kind of wanted to go over some of the standards that have changed over the couple of years, you've, I'm sure you've heard that the audits of the financial statements, the federal awards that the county get are becoming more and more complex and have a lot of reporting requirements. So just kind of to put it in perspective, there's been an increased complexity in reporting standards, there's only been two years in which GASB, which is the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, did not issue a GASB statement, and that was 1985 and 2014. Even more surprising, the percent of GASB statements issued over the last 10 years is 40%, just in the past 10 years, so you can see we've had a lot of standards we've had to follow, and a lot of items that have changed, just new GASB standards, as well as federal funding with complex compliance requirements, a lot of those are related to COVID, a lot of money has been given to counties and to local areas that require a lot of complex requirements, and that takes extra time on the finance staff and anybody that's administering those grants, and can be quite confusing at times, so just kind of an update on what those, how those standards impact us as well as the staff here in the county. So here you can see, again, just an overview, recently, in the past few years, 2020, we had to implement GASB 88, which was disclosures related to debt, 2021 was fiduciary activities, and that was how those were reported in the financial statements, and most recently, 2022, which is the financial audit that we just completed, was related to leases, and what that did is changed the way capital leases and operating releases are reported. Some may think, big deal, I mean, how many leases could we have, and you'd be surprised the, the time that it takes just to gather those leases to then evaluate them to see if they meet the standard, so again, that was a big standard that was implemented this year. In the future, upcoming, 2023, the GASB 96, that's similar to the lease standard, but it's related to subscription-based technology arrangements, and whether we have any agreements with a right-to-use asset there, and 2025 is compensated absences, and that's on how those will be reported. So without going into too much detail, other than I already have and boring everybody, I just wanted to let you know what has been recent, what's coming in the future, and we're constantly working with the Finance Department to evaluate these standards and how they will impact the county. Next, I'm going to go over the general fund, we'll look at the top revenues and expenditures in the general fund, and look at the top three in each area in a little bit more detail to see what has changed over from the prior year. So the number one revenue in the general fund for the county are property taxes at 47%. Number two are your local option sales taxes at 28%, and those are in green there, it looks like the percentage number is missing. And then, the third one is your restricted intergovernmental revenues, which is the blue in the pie chart, and that's 12%, those are your federal and state grants. Sales and services, permits and fees are behind the top three revenues at 8% and 2%. And then other revenues, which would include other taxes and licenses and miscellaneous revenues, are 3% of that pie. So the top revenue for the general fund, you can see here, these are your ad valorem taxes, that slide looks, ignore that last column in the slide, I'm not sure where that came from, but shows you 2021 and 2022, there was an increase of about $227,000 or 1%, so that's comparable to the prior year, and there was no tax rate change. Again, it looks like, the slides I have aren't matching up here, but it looks like there's a third column that's been put in there that's duplicate, so just ignore that, I apologize for that. Your local option sales tax, there's increased around $1 million, 9%, and that's mainly due to an increase in sales tax for Articles 39, 40, and 44. And your restricted intergovernmental revenues in your general fund, pretty comparable to the prior year, increase of about $4,000, I'm sorry, decrease, that's less than a percent. And I did speak earlier, I wanted to clarify that, I said, you know, a lot of federal and state funding has increased over the years, this is your general fund specifically, and Jennifer, I, if you have more questions about that, we can talk about it, a lot of the federal and state fundings that have been passed down to the county are required to be put in their own, own fund, so you won't see those in the general fund, because there's reporting and compliance requirements are so complex, so that's why you see, could be a reason why you see a slight decrease here. Moving on to your expenditures in your general fund, the four largest expenditures are public safety at 32%, human services at 25%, education at 18%, and then your general government at 17%, which is the blue piece of the pie. So the top expenditure in the general fund is public safety, this includes sheriff's office, detention center, fire protection, emergency communications, inspections, and emergency medical. There was a 16% increase here, about 1.9 million, and just to explain that a little bit more, in fiscal year 2021, the general fund salary expenses for sheriff and EMS were reduced by COVID funds, so there, that's why that's really not comparable to the prior year. Some of the sheriff and EMS salaries in 2021 were recognized as part of a grant fund, like I spoke about a minute ago, instead of within the general fund. The increase is also partially due to a planned COLA in 2022, bonuses and new positions that were planned for. Human services, this includes the Health Department, DSS, and Senior Center, there was an increase of about $540,000 or 5.5%, and that was primarily due to an increase in the Health Department. And education, this includes current expenses for the County Board of Education and CVCC expenses, there was an increase of around $41,000 or about 0.6%, so very comparable to the prior year. And lastly, is general government, which includes governing body, administration, planning, finance, IT, public buildings, garbage, and HR, this increased about $520,000 or 8%, and that was mainly due to an increase in expenditures for information technology and register of deeds. Now moving away from your general fund revenues and expenditures, I just want to talk a little bit about the general fund debt, the principal repayments that were paid in fiscal year 2022 is 700 and almost $33,000, and the interest was $36,000. The debt currently in the general fund is the 2.6 million, and it is planned to be paid off in 2026. So in future years, you'll see the principal payments, if, as long as there's not any new debt, those principal payments would increase, and the interest you're paying over the years would decrease until it's paid off in 2026. I'm going to move on and talk a little bit about fund balance, this is terminology that's used quite often with the audit in the financial statements. used quite often with the audit in the financial statements and can be confusing because there's a lot of different definitions of fund balance depending on what exactly you're talking about and the purpose for it. So in general, fund balance is a measure of the county's financial resources. It takes your assets plus your deferred outflows, minus your liabilities and deferred inflows, and that gives you your fund balance. That fund balance is then broken into five different classifications. You have non-spendable, which would be items not in cash form. That would be things like inventory or prepaid's that you can't spend that. Then there is restricted. That, that's money that is restricted externally by law, such as state statute, or by grants that say that money is restricted on how it's gonna be spent. The next two levels are committed and assigned. Both of those are internal constraints. Committed is at the highest level, the board. If you were to commit funds, it would take a board action to undo it. And then assigned, that's internal, but doesn't necessarily have to be at the board level. That's a little lower than committed. And what is left over is your unassigned fund balance. Other terminology you would hear on fund balance is available fund balance, and this is defined by the Local Government Commission. And this is defined as taking your total fund balance, less your non-spendable, again, this would be inventory or prepaid's, less your stabilization by state statute. This is law, and basically what that is, is your receivables. The law says you cannot spend those receivables, so they are not available. What's left over is your available fund balance. And that terminology is used by the Local Government Commission a lot, and the reason for that is they use that calculation as a basis to compare you to other units your size and to compare you to yourself over past years to see how that percentage is changing. Okay, so back to the county. Now that we have some definitions, the increase in your general fund, available fund balance from '21 to '22 was $783,000. And the available fund balance percentage is 43.14 of your total expenditures for the general fund. To put this in a little bit more perspective, that's about five to six months' worth of expenses that you have available in reserves in your fund balance. And to go back again to some of that terminology, this is the county's total fund balance, broken down to where we get to that available fund balance. So total fund balance is 24 million, less the non-spendable, which would be inventories or prepaid, and then less the stabilization by state statute of the 4 million, gives you the available of 19.9. This is about a 4% increase over prior year, and that's mainly due to an increase in total fund balance overall and a decrease in the receivables. Something to note here, as I talked about all different classifications of fund balance, this is what's available but does not take into account outside restrictions from grant wars and anything that the board has committed to be used. So to give you a three-year comparison with your available fund balance and the available fund balance as a percentage of your expenses and transfers out, you can see that difference over the past couple of years. We have, just if you look at '21 and '22, that's what we just talked about. So there's been an increase in your available fund balance and a slight decrease in that percentage due to probably larger expenditures. But as a whole, there's not been a large change from the prior year. The Local Government Commission, we have to complete a data input sheet off of the financial statements that we submit with the audit, and they provide some performance indicators for us, as well as the county. Jennifer reviews that and prepares it, and we have submit that to the Local Government Commission. They do provide a median for similar units. So for general fund expenditures under 100 million, and this is from the prior year because they don't have current year numbers, the median for similar units is 39%. A lot of people, you know, always ask, is this a good number? Is this a bad number? And that's not something that really can be answered because general fund expenditures under 100 million, there, there's lots of levels within there, and it really depends on what the plans are for each county, whether they're trying to increase that fund balance for a project or if they've just done a project. So there's a lot of things that go into that. That's just something to consider. So up until now, everything I've been talking about was for the general fund. I'm gonna switch topics a little bit and talk about your enterprise funds. The first one is your solid waste fund, and this is an overview. Your cash flow from operations was $90,000, and your budgetary net income was 100 and almost $55,000. There was a decrease in cash from operations over the prior year, which was around $30,000. Yet there was an increase in the net income of $34,000 compared to the prior year. And as we talked about fund balance, fund balance terminology in an enterprise fund is different. It's called net position, but this is basically your working capital. So the total net position for the solid waste fund was $443,000. If you take out your net investment in capital assets, which is calculated by taking your total capital assets less the debt you owe on it, the unrestricted net position there is negative $336,000. In the prior year, this was a lot lower, so this has increased, and we'll look at it a little bit. We can talk about that more in the next couple of slides. So water funds, the county has two water funds, the Bethlehem Water and the County Water and Sewer. You can see the cash flow from operations there and the budgetary income. Both funds had an increase in net income, and you can see the cash flow from operations. For Bethlehem Water, there was an increase in cash flows from operations of around 168,000. And for the County Water and Sewer, there was a slight, there was a decrease of about 400,000. As far as the net income for Bethlehem Water, there was a, a increase from the prior year of about 250,000. And for the County Water and Sewer, there was an increase in net income of 351,000. So again, these numbers can get confusing. It kinda gives you that cash flow, whereas your budgetary net income would take into account some, some accruals in there. And the water fund net position, you can see for Bethlehem Water and for the county, that takes the total net position less the net investment in capital assets, which gives you your unrestricted net position. Again, Bethlehem Water increased in total net position 460,000 approximately, and the county was about 651,000 increase in net, total net position. This has both your water and sewer funds on here as well. Talks about debt, just like we looked at with the other funds. So you can see the principal and interest that's being paid each year. And again, that principal amount will go up slightly unless you have any new debt. The debt currently that's on there is planned to be paid off in 2041. And another overview of, kinda giving you a summary of what I just talked about for three years for the water and sewer funds, and I believe this is both of them combined. The quick ratio is something else that the Local Government Commission looks at. And the reason they look at this is to make sure, so what the quick ratio is, is taking your current assets divided by your current liabilities. Do you have enough assets to cover in current those liabilities? And if that number starts to get below one, that's when they have a concern. It's a performance indicator. They look at it to make sure that rates are reasonable and you have a plan to be able to cover those liabilities. So you can see for 2022, that quick ratio is 9.5. That's not anywhere near the concern at the local government level. But again, something internally that you would have to discuss if there was anything that you wanted to look at more there. And then the operating net income, excluding depreciation and debt, principal and interest, and you can see that percent there as well. And as I talked about those performance indicators, we have negative performance indicators and we have positive performance indicators. There were no negative performance indicators that came about with that data input sheet. But along with that, up until now, what I've been talking about is the financial statement audit. There's also a compliance piece to the audit, which has gotten larger and larger every year because of those awards. And we did two of the programs that we audited. One was low-income energy assistance, and the other one was foster care. We had a finding in both of those programs, which there's more information in, in your audit report, and I'm available to discuss if there are specific questions after you look at that. But both of those findings are reported in there. In general, for foster care, there was backup that didn't match the type of funding. And in the low-income home energy assistance, the source documents didn't equal what was paid, but ultimately, they were eligible to be paid. So it's kind of a, a quick summary. But again, after you have the opportunity to look at that compliance report, if you have any questions or want any more details about that, I'd be glad to, to talk to anyone about that. And lastly, that was a lot of information that was kinda thrown out. You, this is what I do day in and day out. So sometimes I get those blank stares, and I'm just not sure if it's, if there's questions or not. But to, and the information up there is Kotang Chalmosa. She's the senior audit manager on your job. She was unable to be here today. I'm Erica Brown. My email's the same. It's just ebrown@msa.cpa. Phone number's the same, and I'm the audit partner on the job. So while I'm not here talking to Jennifer, day in and day out, we have conversations throughout the year, and I review the audit report for approval. So I'm always here if you have questions. And again, if you're looking for a summary, I believe you were, received the financial statements. In the front of the financial statements, there's a section called Management Discussion and Analysis. It's maybe 10 pages long compared to the thick book. That is a great place to look to start, to get an overview of what happened during the year, increases, decreases, reasons for them. And it also has a section at the end that looks for the, talks about the budget for the fiscal year 2023. So again, if you're looking for a summary overview, just to look at and not read that large report, that's a good place to start. And that's all I have unless anyone has questions.
So in a nutshell, we had a good report.
Yes, sir.
And our fund balance.
Could I have said that 15 minutes ago?
Well, just wanted to clarify for the people out there listening, they're hearing all these things, increase, decrease, and all that. But, you know, we've done a lot of projects, and we've spent some money, but we've also taken in some money.
Correct.
I guess I'm just a bottom-line guy. But, you know, I appreciate your work and a lot of good information, and we'll be in touch if we have any more questions. Anyone have anything?
No, good report, good job. Thank you, Jennifer and your staff, because I know you fed the information to her, and everything worked out real well. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you very much.
Okay. We need to approve this audit.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the audit as presented.
Okay, have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries seriously. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, ma'am. Thank y'all, Jennifer and the Finance Department for what you did. Okay, moving on to our next item, number nine. Recognize Ms. Pamela Bowman, Education Coordinator for Alexander County Soil and Water on update on storm debris projects.
All right. Thank you for having me tonight. I mainly have some pictures to show you of some work that we have actually got done. So I'll try not to take too long either, but I just wanted to come to you and give you an update since we do have some of this work done. This is about our EWP program, our Emergency Watershed Program, and this is a little bit about the status. It came from the November 2020 damage from Tropical Storm Etta, I believe. There was debris in streams, and it was blocking up channels. And so this money was able to get debris out of three sites. And just wanted to update that we, right at two years now, but we've got the debris out of those three sites. And I've got down here that the contractor's been paid for that part, and the county's been paid back for the, the 90% is because we don't have all the burning complete. But two of the three sites have the debris completely burned, and the last should be done soon. Hopefully, we'll be wrapping this up in early 2023. But I do have a little bit more on there that you have, just that Western Piedmont Council of Governments is administering these funds, and so they're gonna be finishing up the reports and everything, working with them. And they'll, their portion will be getting paid back as well. So I'll just move on to the, the pictures. These are some that I showed you, you know, the before pictures, year and a half, two years ago. So at Hauser Farms on Surfris Springs Road, on the left of all of these are the before pictures, and on the right is what it looks like now. It's just more, a closer-up version of that, the debris on the left, and then on the right, the debris's been taken out, and then the area's not repaired, not restored, but back to what, you know, close to what they were before. And that's just one of the big piles and on the left, and then the, after it's been burned on the right. And I think we have another pile and after it's burned, and this area might need a little bit more work. Wanted to go ahead and update you before we start asking for the next group, moving on. But, okay, the Lackey Farm on Osfoal Dam Road, this was, this in between basically Osfoal Dam Road Bridge and the dam, or goes above the dam just a little. But you see, that's a big, big pile there that's been taken out. And that's kinda the same pile, different angle. Several, several debris pictures, and it's best we could, the same, same section after it was taken out. So you'll see in a minute. That's Osfoal Dam Road, and then a closer-up picture, but you can see those trees are gone. So we're, we're protecting that bridge. And this is a picture of that pile. I'm pretty sure that was the final pile, but that's our Solmar Conservationist, Alec Yount. And he's, he's not quite six feet. He's like 5'10" or so, but you can see the size of that pile compared to him. And it was almost finished burning, you know, with this picture here. So they got a little bit of cleanup to do still. But the third site, Jimmy Lambert's or Huckleberry Ridge Road, we just have a few pictures of that as well. This is, like I said, same debris on the left, finished product on the right. There's some trees down and then cleared out. So we're, I'm pretty excited about this. I hope y'all are, too. But it's been, it's been a long time coming. So that was, this is down at the end where it was actually pretty bad with the trees totally across the river. So that, that's, you know, some of the best places that we got, were able to get taken out. That's a debris pile, and these didn't seem to do justice of the pictures. But this, this area's been completely burned and smoothed back out. So it's basically, you know, you couldn't tell it was there now, both of those. So then just wanted to update you. So we have two more pots of money, and the state emergency funds, these are ones that weren't eligible for that EWP federal funds, but they're still from the same tropical storm. This is what bids are open for right now, and it's gonna be ran through McGill Associates. We've already had the pre-bid meeting, and bids are due December 21. And the, the plan is to hopefully request approval of a contractor at the next meeting or at your January meeting. So I wanted to give you an update on how it's actually happening. Some of it's actually getting done, so you could see that. And hopefully, we've, we're gonna fund one site, and if we have extra money, hopefully two. The next picture's from the, the one that's gonna be funded. So that's, you know, pretty, pretty tore up, too. Both of those obviously are still debris sites. And then the last, the next slide, the third pot of money is the strap program, Stream Rehabilitation Assistance Program. That one McGill's handling as well. We're reviewing the bid package, talking to them about that now. It'll be, most likely gonna be January before that comes out. So they're gonna, you know, not be exactly at the same time, but they might be going on at the same time, because this one's gonna be for three sites. So these are all paid back 100% unless there's additional expenditures for the engineering. 15% of the construction funds can go towards the engineering, but if we go over that, the county is paying a little bit extra of that. But if they may have any questions, I appreciate you letting me give you an update. And like I said, I'm pretty excited. We're pretty excited in the office that we're getting some of these done.
Glad we're making progress.
Right.
Looks good.
Great.
How many more sites are? I should know, but you can.
Well, we have a funding for four, basically, or if, if the, if this next round that we're doing right now, if it doesn't take all of the funds, then we can hopefully do two with it. So that would be five with the three. There's a lot more sites other than that, but that's what we have funding for right now. So.
Well, glad we're getting some of them cleaned out before I'm praying there's no more rain like that. But
Exactly.
You know, if we do, we'll be a little bit ahead of the curve, so.
Right, right.
Appreciate your information and what you've done. Any questions for?
Looks good.
Sounds good. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number 10, School Resource Officer Grant and Budget Updates, and Recognizer Sheriff Chad Penn. Come up, sir.
Good afternoon. First off, I want to thank y'all for taking care of my bond process. And there's several people in this room I want to thank, Jennifer Herman, and Jamie, and David, and several people that's helped me along the way. Sorry, this is gonna be Sorry, this is going to be just short and sweet. First off, I want to start off and say, this is not my grant that I wanted. This was done before me. Ms. Hefner applied just exactly how she was asked to apply for it. And so we're just, I'm just having to deal with it. But here's how I want to deal with it. There's six positions that we have to fill. Non-negotiable, we have to fill them. I'm going to reclassify three positions within the office. So I'm just going to move them from current positions that they are and make them school resource officers. Then it, it will, then I will only ask for three new positions. So I'm going to move three and only ask for three. So in moving those three, we're going to save some money there for sure. We're not going to have to hire, you know, six people total. I've talked to David, I've talked to Ms. Hefner about it, and that's well within the grant. Now also, there's going to be some payback because of moving two of those positions within the county. We will get some money back because we can get back paid. Because of the grants already been applied for, this grant's already been approved, the money's already there. So we can get some of that money back, if you understand what I'm saying. I'm giving you worst case scenario. I think it'll be less than this, but I'm just giving you worst case scenario. So just remember, I'm going to reclassify three people, but I'm only going to ask to hire three new people. And that will fill every position, every school within the county. I can't speak for the city, but I can speak for the county. That'll, that'll take care of everybody. First year, if you look at that first page that I gave you, now the grant covers $44,000. So some of these people will be paid like $40,300 and something, whatever the lowest deputy is right now. And so some of this will, you know, reduce off of here. I'm just trying to give you as, what I could give you in about what I had time to get here, about six hours, as far as numbers could go. First year, in benefits only, I think it's going to cost us about $84,000, a little over $84,000. Now, if you add, if you flip over one page, and I will explain this a little bit. The request that the prior administration requested, their total was $636,000 is what it was going to cost the county. If you look at that, I, I went through it today and I cut it, not cutting any safety things. I just cut it things, cut things that I didn't think we needed to start off with. And if you look at the bottom, I have money under my uniform budget that I've, that I'm going to spend towards that. So I think the cost as far as equipment goes is going to cost us just $20,000, a little over $20,000. We've, I found three vehicles, I have MDTs. There's other things that I have that I'm going to place in there to cut our cost. I'm all about trying to save us money. I don't, I don't want to spend it if we don't have to. Now, the other things that I'm going to add, you know, like later on that we, you know, that I think these officers need, I'm going to try to buy towards the end of the budget year, after I see how the budget goes and, and use that money and try to. So next year, the only cost that we're going to have is just benefits. So if you flip over, the second year is $159,000 is what that second year's going to cost us. And it'd be a little less than that because the same thing, we're, you know, $44,000. And there's going to be a few of those that's going to be able to, you know, take a little bit of that money off. But I wanted to give you worst case scenario. It's what I thought that would be. Now, I know two of those positions, who those people are, who I'm going to reclassify. The third one is the one that I'm struggling with right now. So I gave worst case scenario, what the highest benefit package would be. So this number, hoping I could bring it down, depending on I'm going to offer it within the department. That way, if somebody pops up and says, hey, I want to move from the position I'm at to a school resource, then I'm going to give that amount, you know, give them that opportunity instead of making somebody move. Now, if I'm thinking about this correctly, and David and Ms. Hefner, y'all can correct me if I'm wrong, but if we're taking these positions I'm already created, we're still going to save ourselves some money. So it may be lower than this. But with the time I had and just, you know, getting there, I'm trying to give you the best educated guess that I can of what I think it's going to cost us. Now, we're guaranteed this year and we're guaranteed next year, that money. After that, we're not guaranteed. So that's where we're at. This is the best I could come up with in about eight hours and a half, honestly. And I'm open for any questions that you guys got. Ms. Hefner's here. If you have any questions specifically about the grant. Like I said, David Moose has been a big help to me and Jennifer Herman's been a big help for me too, to try to make sure that we had the right numbers and I gave you the best options available with what we're, you know, what we got to deal with right now.
Okay, you hadn't got your seat warm yet hardly, so.
I haven't said anything to chair yet, honestly.
Saving is a good thing and being safe is a good thing, too.
It is. You know, the grant's there. There's a chance that we can, you know, fill all these positions. I know of three that I can put in place, I hope, by end of Christmas, before end of the Christmas break. You know, they're going to be in a school. So then we're going to have only three schools that we're going to have to, you know, to cover. And that'll have to be hiring process and all that. I've heard some, you know, conversation within the office just today that there's some people that, you know, might would want to come. So I, I don't know if I can fill them quickly. I, I don't know. I just know that, you know, right now I have vehicles. That was the big thing and the cost thing. And trying to keep this manageable, you know, for you and for me, you know, and come out with the best outcome.
So a question.
Yes, sir.
You mentioned previous administration's 636. Was that what the, was proposed to the county to cover initially? And what's, what's your total coming up at?
So, and I don't, I watched it, but I can't, I can't give you the date. But I do have a copy of what was proposed. And that was the total cost to the county, $636,000. My first year cost to include just, we're just talking benefits. And then the $20,000 that I think will be necessary for the necessary equipment that I can't cover within my budget right now is $104,876.75 first year. And I might could, you know, I might could do just a little bit more than that. But I just got to look at the budget the first time today. So I'm just trying to give you, you know, I had, just straight up, I had like $9,000 in uniforms. I didn't want to completely delete it, so I, I, you know, I figured it, I asked around if we could cover. I found out too that you, that you agreed to a, I think it was eight vest in capital outlay. We bought five, so I'm going to take those three that's left over and use that to these three that's coming on. Things like that. I could do more, I think, maybe. But with what I've got, I want to try to give you the best guess at what the worst case scenario would be for, you know, for us.
Appreciate the work, what you're doing.
Well, I'm trying.
Sounds good. We will probably cover, oh, down in item number 14, we're going to have a second meeting this month. And we'll probably invite you and we'll cover which route that we want to go. Give us the opportunity to look at it, make sure we're doing it correctly. I know you're going to do a good job.
Well, I appreciate it. And feel free to call me or email me or whatever. I'll answer any questions. If, if you have any other ideas of how we can, you know, get this, these costs down a little bit more, I'm, I'm willing to, you know, I'm willing to try, you know, whatever we can do. I, I think it's beneficial if we can get the numbers right that, you know, I think we're all agreeable to, you know?
Well, I appreciate you getting this together for ours in a short notice.
You're welcome.
And you've still got plenty of time to, to work on it. Take a deep breath and get yourself settled in. And, you know, if you need to get back on the agenda for the 14th, I don't think any of us sitting here would have an objection to you coming back. And, you know, fine tune it, whatever you need to do.
I'm settled on the position, so I'll tell you that. I think that's the best option right now. Just if I can cover more within my budget, honestly. And then you, you gentlemen, just being aware that, you know, at the end of this budget year, I'm going to try to use that money to buy whatever we need for these officers. So next year, we don't have any cost except just what benefits would be, just so you know what my plan is. That's, that's what I would try to do. Any excess I had, try to buy it at the end of the year. So these guys are ready and we don't have to buy anything else, don't have to ask for anything else. We ready to go.
Any other questions for Jennifer? Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Moving on to our next item of business, number 11. Election of Alexander County Board Chairman for 2023. I'll open the floor for nomination.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Commissioner Marty Pennel for chairman.
Any other nomination? No other nomination? Entertain a vote, call in favor of Mr. Pennel, chairman, raise your right hand. You got it, sir. And these things will come into effect in January. Okay, and then item number 12, election of Alexander County Board Vice Chairman for 2023. I would open for nomination.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Josh Lael.
Okay, Josh Lael. Is there anyone else?
Move to second.
Okay, have a motion to conclude. Okay, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. And I say those will take over in January. And moving on to item number 13. Proclamation declaring December 1st through 31st, 2022 as Christmas in Bethlehem. And I'd recognize Commissioner Lael for the reading of that proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And first, I would say the Christmas season has already started. Obviously, not only in Bethlehem, but throughout the county. And this past Saturday was very busy with the Taylorsville Parade. I was fortunate enough to, to ride in the parade and let my kids throw an excessive amount of candy to people. My six-year-old was a little aggressive with his throwing of candy occasionally. And I had to tell him to stop trying to throw it at people and throw it to people. But I know, and I followed Chairman Reese and his family. He was in the vehicle in front of us and, and I will say they had several very large coolers full of candy.
Loads of candy.
I would love to know how much candy Sam's Club in Hickory sold just to the participants of the Taylorsville Parade because it is, it wasn't, it's, it's a sightseeing. And also did have the star lighting, the Bethlehem Star Lighting Saturday night, and that went well. But I would like to read this. Proclamation declaring December 1st through 31st, 2022 as Christmas in Bethlehem. Whereas Alexander County wishes to promote events that increase community spirit and offer opportunities for fellowship during the Christmas season. And whereas the annual Bethlehem Star Lighting held on December 3rd, 2022 has been a fixture of the Christmas season for more than 40 years, drawing thousands of citizens to the Bethlehem area. And whereas the 21st Annual Christmas Drive-Thru is set for December 9th through 11th, 2022, and will feature 40 scenes ending with a live nativity. And whereas a Christmas Boat Parade is scheduled for December 10th, 2022. And whereas the Bethlehem Post Office will allow citizens to use the Bethlehem NC stamp to imprint the back of their Christmas cards and other mailings. And whereas these Christmas events promote values and morals which are the binding fiber of the community and are strongly supported by Alexander County Area Churches, Businesses, and Citizens. Now therefore, let it be resolved that the Alexander County Board of Commissioners does hereby declare December 1st through 31st, 2022 as Christmas in Bethlehem. Adopted this the 5th day of December, 2022, to be signed by Chairman Ronnie Reese and attested by Clerk of the Board Jamie Starnes.
Okay, I would take you made that in the form of a motion, correct?
Uh, yes, sir. That is made in the form of a motion.
Okay, I have a second.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you for Christmas in Bethlehem. And moving on to our next item, number 14. We need to schedule a second meeting and I recognize Adam Clerk Jamie Starnes.
We need to schedule a second meeting in December to take official action on the SRO proposal. I think the 12th and the 19th is what everybody's looking at.
December 12th, December 19th, which one works the best for us?
For second meeting?
Yeah. That's on, about that's your Monday.
I would say, I would say the 12th just to not interfere with holiday happenings any more than required. Just because when you get, as we approach Christmas, there'll be more, you know, work, Christmas parties and dinners and things like that.
Okay, we have, you going to make that as a motion?
Yes, sir. I'll make that as a motion. To have the second meeting on December 12th.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion or questions?
Is that a 6:00 PM one?
And I'll try to get this room.
Okay, all in favor of December 12th, 6:00 PM here in the Commissioner's Room, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. Moving on to our next item of business, Budget Amendments, number 24 to 28. Recognize Adam Clerk Jamie Starnes once again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Budget Amendment Number 24 is to increase the County Parks Department budget for trail work at Rocky Face Park and also for the annual fireworks display to celebrate Independence Day. Number 25 is to reimburse the Emergency Telephone System Fund for fiscal year 2022 expenditures that were reclassified to the General Fund. This transfer is required by the 911 Board based on their review of the county's fiscal year 2022 911 Revenue Expenditure Report. Number 26 is to budget for the closeout of the wastewater portion of the industrial timber grant project and transfer the remaining cash balance back to the General Fund. The wastewater portion of the project is complete and there will be no additional grant expenses or revenues for it. Number 27 is to budget for a transfer of remaining cash balance from the industrial timber wastewater grant project to the General Fund. The wastewater project is complete and there will be no additional grant expenses or revenues. Number 28 is to budget for a true-up adjustment of the fiscal year 2022 tax revenues compared to fiscal year 2022 dis- disbursements to fire departments.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Any questions on the budget ordinance?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve budget ordinance, or ordinances, 24 through 28.
Okay, we have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Okay, have a motion in a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. Moving on to our next item, Board Appointments and Reappointments for Emergency Planning for the COG and for Planning and Zoning. And recognize our Clerk Jamie Starnes once again.
For Local Emergency Planning Committee, it's recommended to appoint Thomas Mitchell as DSS Director, Jeff Sigmund as EMS Director, Billy Walker for Health Director, and to reappoint Andrew Ferguson to represent the SIR team. All these appointments are for three years. Western Piedmont Council of Government's Technical Coordinating Committee appoint Brian Burgess. And Planning and Zoning Commission appoint Byron Frye. He is fulfilling the unexpired term of Dale Fox, which will expire in June 2025.
Okay, you've heard those appointments. Entertain a motion to approve.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Okay, motion in a second. All in favor of those appointments, raise your right hand. Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. No other business that we have. Okay, moving on to our Consent Agenda. I would entertain a motion of approval. We've had, been in your packets, had time to overlook it, to look it over. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve the Consent Agenda as presented.
I need a second.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. And at this time, we will enter directly into our Board of County Commissioners Consolidated Human Services Board Meeting. And we will, after that meeting, we will adjourn into closed session. And I'd recognize at this time, let me get my papers out here. Recognize for a public comment, has anyone signed up for that? Okay, recognize Billy Walker, Health Director. Thanks for coming tonight.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. I'm going to do a brief update. The first thing I'm going to talk about is our accreditation. We had our onsite survey September one this year. And Septem- I mean, November eighteenth, they recommended for us to be approved for accreditation with honors. They've never done the accreditation with honors before. We were a hundred percent, so we didn't miss any deficiencies. And this was a six-year endeavor instead of a four. So to me, I'm very proud of our team to not have any deficiencies.
That's good.
So July twenty-twenty-two until the next accreditation date, which is twenty-twenty-six, we have already put in team meetings to, that we, I meet with my staff quarterly to make sure that we're gathering the data and evidence and placing those in specific folders for the next accreditation. So we're going to be more than ready for that as well. The next thing that I'm going to talk about is communicable disease and what our current situation looks like. The numbers that are in your packet are, of course, from two weeks ago. So I'm going to give you updated numbers today. We have nineteen in the last seven days, but we have seen a little uptick in the last three days with the cases. And I checked before I came, our region, some of our region, which were Region Seven, they've all seen a slight increase in COVID. We'll have better numbers towards the end of the week. We still have just one person hospitalized. And I had let y'all know about the death, that we did have one more death from COVID and it was on the twenty-first. So that makes our total one fifty-four. Our large total or cumulative total is twelve thousand two hundred and ten cases total. We did get one outbreak. The juvenile detention has an outbreak right now, so we only have one, one current outbreak. We are still doing our COVID boosters. Not sure what's going on with COVID right now. It seems to, it seems to have been down and now we've seen a little bit of an increase. Monkeypox, thankfully, we still have no cases in Alexander County and all the surrounding counties are staying stable, actually, the whole state is. So that's good. Flu cases are still on the rise. Our state deaths are different than what's listed for you, so I'm going to give you updated numbers there as well. We've had thirty-five for our state and still just the one pediatric death. There's also lots of viruses out there right now. RSV's one. I think a lot of the adults have been having RSV. That's something normally they don't test an adult for. But here lately, some people who have multiple health issues, they have been testing those and they have been positive. The next thing I want to talk about and maybe get you to help me get the word out is the Community Health Assessment is due for us in twenty-twenty-three, it's due in March. So we actually have this survey out right now. It's on our Facebook page, it's on our website. We have paper copies that we've delivered to different areas. We've got English and Spanish versions. So I'd like for everybody that lives in Alexander County, if, if you would, fill out this survey for us. This is going to guide our direction for the next four years. And we want to have what the population of Alexander County sees as the health issues. So if you'll go to the next slide, there is a Q R. code. You can put up your phone and it'll, it'll pull that code up and you just click it and you answer the questions. And it is, it's a lengthy document, but it's wanting to get where the county sees the issues. So please take time to do that survey. And everybody, you know, in church, at your workplaces, in schools, if they're fifteen and older, they can fill out that survey. Once that's done, we will bring that back to the board and we will see what our focus areas are for the next four years. What's new for twenty-twenty-three? We did have three smaller units out behind the Health Department and they were in poor shape. And so we did get one of our state consultants, it was the WIC audit, didn't really like the situation that was in because it was an old building. So we used some of our COVID funds to buy this building. And it is temperature-controlled so that we can keep all of our supplies in, in this area and get them out of the Health Department. So we have, we actually have organized, we've inventoried everything in there. Down by, on the right side, is our to-go kits that we've purchased. When we get, when we get something that we have to go out and do vaccination clinic, we've got our coolers, our bags, we've got our tents, everything that we would need to do an event, then we're just going to grab and go. I'm very, very excited about this building. Our trailer, I don't know if y'all have seen our trailer that we have when we take to events, but it's going to be able to fit in this building as well. We're going to finalize the Community Health Assessment and we're going to be working to increase access. I put behavioral health on there because I am sure that that is going to be one of our big issues in our substance use disorder counseling. So then we'll educate the community related to those health issues and work together to come up with some solutions on how to help, help our county be more healthy. So I do need your approval on two codes. The COVID, we, we've been doing this, but we didn't need this code because it was free through the state and now it is no longer free. So we had to come up with a price. And you'll see that the proposed price is lower than what the Medicaid price is. And that's because we're trying to save people who don't, who don't have insurance or their payer source is not very good. They're not going to be able to pay fifty or more dollars to come in and get COVID tested and we don't want that to be a barrier. So we're going to keep that, that's what's in red, we're going to keep that at twenty-four, twenty-five dollars for them. But then the removal, that's just an impacted ear. So that's the removal of that. So you'll see that our proposed price, price for that is twenty dollars. So we just need approval for those.
Okay, I'll make it as a motion that we approve the fees and the codes as given to us.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously, thank you.
Any other questions for me?
Billy, I have one statement I want to say to you, this information that you're sending us out.
Okay.
That's the kind of information I'd like to say a long time ago. Because you know, that information that you send is really, really good because it answers a lot of questions.
The weekly report?
Yeah, absolutely, I love it. Because everything that some of the people in the community might ask you about is right there.
Yeah.
That is good.
Yeah, I, I thought we needed more communication just to let y'all know because you might be asked some of that questions and you'll have that weekly from us. Think it's a great tool.
It is a great tool and it really helps us so that we'll have the information so that we don't like, huh?
You don't have to wait till the next time I'm here to, to get the information.
Right, and it, it works a lot better and I do appreciate that, thank you.
Well, good, I'm glad.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks, ma'am.
Next up, the Kristy Hunt, Senior Senator, for her report.
Give me night tonight.
Yes, very busy.
Okay, well, Senior Senator's doing great as always. We're having a lot of increased participation. We are still doing bingo, birthday lunches, that kind of stuff. We're going to do a movie night during the day. We're going to show It's a Wonderful Life and do popcorn and pizza for our seniors. And they're really seeming to, they're signing up for it, so I'm really excited about that. Next year, we are going to add more evidence-based classes. These are classes that really have proven their need. The Matter of Balance, we had a lady one year that was on a walker when she began the class. And when she finished, she was walking around the room without any assistance at all. So we were very proud of that and we are going to, I'm very happy to bring those back. We do plan to trip, to add more trips next year, day trips and possibly overnight trips. So we used to do those and seniors really liked it and they've been asking for those back. My personal favorite is whenever I take them to the zoo. They get their little scooters and they just go all over, so it's wonderful, it's, it's a lot of fun. Something, on the next one is the, the blood drive. This is a big need right now and I know we hear this a lot. You know, we're always in, in high demand for blood. It's the gift that really is one that a lot of people can give. Our seniors cannot give so much, but they need it. So I'm asking everybody, if you can donate blood, please come out to our blood drive. It's very important to kind of give that gift of life and keep them going.
Do people need to make an appointment?
You can, or you can just drop in. Yeah, you can drop in. I brought a flyer for you too, if y'all want that, Jamie. We have had, some of our local pharmacies are donating gift cards. So we're kind of going to use that as an incentive to, to come out and we will be giving those away. So it's, it's really good. We've had a few of these and we've had a decent turnout, but this is before Christmas. I really hope we'll get a lot bigger turnout. Micah usually comes and takes pictures, so you may be in the paper if you come. Our anniversary party went great. We had several of our past directors to come and so that was fun. It was, it was really good. We had a good number of people to come out. And now we have gotten a new, a new grant. I try to find as many grants as I can to keep us going. And this is a grant that's worth twenty-eight hundred dollars and we will need to have a shred-a-thon. This is another big thing that's impacting our seniors. They, they will answer the phone calls that they get and the grandson is in trouble somewhere and they think that it could possibly be their grandson, so they send money. And most of this money is going overseas. And it's not to help anybody but the people who are trying to scam them out of their money. I get the calls a lot saying, Kristy, Medicare just called me. And I give them my phone, I give them my Medicare number and, and then they hung up on me. Can you call and make sure that they have everything they need? So then I have to call Medicare and have them to watch their account because it's not, you know, these are people that are just out to scam them. So this is going to be more about prevention and, and trying to, you know, trying to help them with that. And I do, we, like I said, we are going to have to have a shred-a-thon with that. That is a requirement of it. And then I kind of hope to have some T-shirts made. Our seniors do a lot of free T-shirts. And so we can have some tips printed on the back and maybe have them, you know, that way they can kind of spread the word. AARP will be coming and having the tax service again next year. It's a great program. This is completely free. They do simple tax returns and it's for any age. The Senior Center just hosts it and we have a lot of volunteers from the AARP that comes and does that. So, and you do need to call for an appointment for that. We'll get you scheduled. Okay, Medicare Open Enrollment is currently going on and I do not have the numbers in there for open enrollment since we still have a couple of days left. It has been very busy. So far, since October fifteenth, I do believe I have seen or talked to, along with the help of a few of our volunteers, about three hundred and fifty people. So the numbers are going to be there, there, we've seen several good savings. You know, even, even if it's a dollar or two, it's a savings and that's that much more money that they get to keep in their pocket. So I'm very proud of that. And I love whenever they call and say, Kristy, I just, you know, I trust you all so much and I appreciate your help and that just makes me feel good, so. Okay, next slide, participation has kind of skyrocketed there. And it's probably due to Medicare. A lot of people do come in this time of the year to get their plans checked and I'm very happy about that. So like I said, we'll have better numbers for you, even more updates very, very soon. Okay, any questions?
Good information, I appreciate what y'all are doing out there. Sounds like a lot of fun.
It is a lot of fun. I do my best to keep our seniors happy and playful and just having a good time and enjoying life. And I hope that one day, whenever I retire, I can just probably just hang out there too, so. It's a lot of fun. We, you need to drop in and see us. I'm very thankful for those that did come to our anniversary party. It was good. I love for you all to be able to see what we do, see the seniors in their environment, you know, doing what they do. Come in and see one of our latest puzzles that they've put together. I took a few pictures of our usual people and had a puzzle made with their faces on there. So they, they really enjoy that, so. Okay, all right, if I don't see y'all, have a Merry Christmas.
You too.
Merry Christmas.
Okay, last but not least, next up, Alexander County Department of Social Service and Ms. Trina Riddle. And do you have someone with you?
I have Michael Thompson with me.
Okay, Michael Thompson, thank you.
We are definitely not Thomas.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So we wanted to update you on a couple of different things that are currently going on for the agency. We've had good progress with filling vacancies. We're currently at six percent vacancy level. We're actually attracting highly qualified individuals to fill the positions that have come vacant. Between October and present, we've hired eleven new employees across the board. So it's been supervisors, it's been Medicaid workers, actually, social workers. And we have five vacant positions presently with three of those actually scheduled for interviews. So we are making really good progress. You know, we're stabilizing that agency pretty good. Next slide, basically, this is just kind of the breakdown of the individuals we've hired so far. And you can see, as I said, you know, we're, we're hiring supervisors with experience, Medicaid workers from different counties and it's, it's going well. So, next slide.
Oh, it's my turn. So we do, we try to do a lot of employee engagement with our ERA. So in October, of course, we do trick-or-treating for the foster children and also our workers' children or grandchildren. We treated the workers to a blue breakfast. We had a hall and door decorating contest as well as costume contest. We are very competitive at DSS, we like to win. We also had our, our Thanksgiving lunch. ERA pays for the ham, the turkey, the dressing, and then everyone brings a dish. It's a really good day. In December, we're having Snack Day, which is actually Friday. Again, everyone brings a dish and we just eat all day. But these are all provided by ERA, they're sponsored by ERA. And the, the staff really enjoy the activities that we do. It gives them a little break from seeing people all day long. The emergency shelters, since we, since we had the flood in twenty-twenty, we've really been focusing on emergency shelters. I personally have worked at DSS almost twenty-two years and that was the only shelter I had ever worked. And so we're really trying to train the staff so that we're more prepared. So we met with Daniel Fox, he's the Emergency Management Coordinator and we're going to begin in January with some quarterly trainings and meetings. So we're going to have a Red Cross Disaster Program Manager come and discuss the Red Cross Letter of Intent later in December. And then in January, we're going to have an equipment training which will also be provided by the American Red Cross. And that'll be for the whole agency because we all are required to work at the shelter if we have to open another one. The playground improvement, so we have forty-three hundred dollars that we have had donated or that we've done fundraisers to raise. And so that's going to begin, we're going to get new mulch, we're going to replace some of the equipment because it's been there ten or more years, some of the pieces. We have some cement really heavy tables that we're going to replace with some picnic resin tables so that it'll be safer for the children. We're going to do some painting, I think that's about all. Just make it look better and so the children can enjoy it more.
Okay, so next slide is just talking about, again, some progress. Right now, we have seventeen children that are free to adopt. We've been working really hard to find adoption families. And so there's been four adoptions this month. We have a family of four that we are actually looking at possibly having an opportunity for them to be adopted altogether. So it's actually really exciting, to be honest with you. You know, I mean, we want to see these kids excel and do well. And this is on that right path, on that right correction, so. You know, we're hoping to give you guys more and more better news and continue increasing, you know, just kind of the agency's reputation within the community. Any questions?
No questions, but thank you.
Absolutely, appreciate you guys coming.
Information real good, to the point, that's great. Thank you. That concludes our consolidated meeting. And we will adjourn from open, open meeting to go into closed session. I make that as a motion per our contractual and personnel discussions that take place in closed session. And we will read adjourn only for adjournment. Do I have a second? All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, we're now in closed session, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.